There we go, okay. We'll call to order a Wilsonville City Council meeting for a work session on October 5, 2020 at 6:13 PM. Review of agenda or things on consent? Any questions from council on agenda items or on consent agenda topics? No? Any councilor concerns? No councilor concerns? All right. Why don't we... Well, let me ask one question of staff if I could. Do we have a schedule for when the big pipe work is going to go across Wilsonville Road at the Kinsman intersection?
Yes, we do. Off the top of my head, I don't know what that exact date is, but I can get it to you.
I was just thinking in terms of keeping the public informed. I guess I had thought we were doing that late summer or fall this year, but I'm not sure if that's still true.
No, I think that would be pretty ambitious. They're still right near the water treatment plant right now. But I can get that and email it to council.
Okay, all right, that'd be good. As we move that project up into where the public's going to be more directly impacted, I think it's critical that we post, as we have talked at years past, about the project and what it is and how it's being paid for and, you know, some of that kind of information so that it is evident to the public as they encounter it. Which I hope is the protocol we're doing anyway.
Well, we would normally do that for city projects, but this is not a city project. Is that something you still want us to say that is being funded by ratepayers from Hillsborough and TVWD?
Well, yeah, I think people need to understand that, you know, and, you know, it'd be nice to be able to work in something about some benefits accruing to the city of Wilsonville.
Oh, yeah, we will definitely do that, but I thought you were talking about the reader boards and the signs that we post on the construction site. You don't... Is that what you're talking about?
Well, I am talking about something at the construction site, yes.
Okay, so you want signs stating how the project is being paid for? I understand the communication to the public, we're on top of that, working with TVWD, but you want it right out the site? You want some information?
Yeah, I mean, we have had this discussion in years past that it's important that our people understand what the projects are. Sometimes they're urban renewal, sometimes they're other funds. Understanding what it is when they encounter the project, I think, is important.
Yeah, I'm just wanting to clarify, Mayor. I know we do that on all of our city projects, but this is not a city project, so I just wanted to clarify. But I hear what you're saying.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Yep.
All right, anything else? Anybody else? Doesn't look like it. Why don't we move forward then into our work session items? The first of which is published as a grant-funded trolley purchase coming.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm Scott Simonton, Fleet Manager. Bring you tonight another grant-funded transit vehicle for Smart. This is a replacement of our existing trolley. This is an ODOT grant funded at 80/20, which is pretty typical for us. Total purchase price on this vehicle's $221,000, and that leaves us with a $44,000 match amount. Because this is a CNG vehicle, it qualifies to use STIF funding for the match percentage, so that $44,000 will come out of our existing STIF money.
And can you tell the public what STIF is?
Statewide Transportation Infrastructure Fund, is that right, Dwight?
Statewide Transportation Improvement Fund.
Yes. So that's the employee payroll tax that went into effect a year ago. So essentially, it's really a budget-neutral purchase for us because of those two funding sources. So we're asking to award a contract to Creative Bus Sales out of Canby, and we would have about a seven-to-eight-month purchase or build time on that before delivery, so we would expect to see it mid-part of next year.
Council, any questions for Mr. Simonton? Councilor Akervall?
Thank you. I did have a question. I noticed in the packet that the information said that the new trolley would be enclosed so that we could operate it year-round. And I wondered, because, let's see, I think our current trolley is like almost 20 years old. Does that sound right? Yeah. So, but does the new trolley also have, is it like kind of either-or? Like, it could be open or it could be enclosed? Does it allow that sort of flexibility?
No, we attempted to locate something that would do that, but we weren't able to find an open-air available or type trolley that would meet all the other requirements we had. This was actually kind of difficult. We have requirements, because this is money that comes from the FTA, that they have to be tested at Altoona, and they have to meet certain requirements. And a lot of these trolleys are purchased by tour companies and the like that aren't held to those standards. So it was kind of difficult to find an FTA-approved trolley. I would add, though, that we don't intend to get rid of our existing open-air trolley. We're going to keep that and try and get some refurbishment done on it down the road so that we would have the ability to provide that open-air trolley also.
It is kind of fun to have...
Councilor West has left the meeting for the record. Please go ahead.
I was just going to say that it is kind of fun to have that open-air experience when the weather is agreeable, right? I know that people enjoy that, and it's kind of fun. So, interesting to see that it's coming from Canby, Oregon? I mean, very, very close.
Well, Canby's the selling dealer. The trolley's actually built in Michigan, and the dealer out of Canby has the state contract for that particular item, so...
I see, I see. Well, thank you. Thanks for the additional information.
Councilor West has rejoined the meeting for the record. Any other questions for staff? Yeah, I had the same kind of... Council President Akervall, really, especially in this COVID era when we're trying to be outdoors as much as possible. You know, I think that people do enjoy the outdoor, open-air function when the weather is conducive to that, and, you know, people inside the vehicle is more difficult than it's been before, so I don't know where we're headed, but we, I guess, need to be thinking about all those things. Anything else? As you guys are making this really easy for us tonight here, thank you, Scott, for your presentation. I don't see any other questions.
Okay, thank you very much.
Next item on our published work session is our Frog Pond West Development Agreement topic, also on tonight's agenda. Mr. Namsoo, good evening.
Good evening, Mayor Nam. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, sir.
Great, thank you. Good evening, Mayor Nam, city councilors. My name is Chris Namsoo. I'm the city's Community Development Director. And tonight, well, I would say it was easy up until this agenda item. I have a little bit of a Tuesday agenda item for your consideration tonight. Tonight, I'm here to present to you what would be a minor modification to the Frog Pond West Development Agreement template to address a requirement for applicants to waive what is called the right to remonstrate against the formation of a local improvement district, also known as an LID. So an LID is an infrastructure funding tool. And this waiving of the right to remonstrate in plain language means that you simply cannot object to the formation of a future local improvement district. This item was scheduled for your last meeting as a consent agenda item, and given the smoke in the air as well as the number of concerns that were raised by the council before the last meeting, the developer, West Hills Development, and their attorney requested that the item be continued to tonight's agenda so that they could provide you some additional information, some additional consideration. And inside of your packet today, you have a letter from Mike Robinson, and his narrative, it outlines a number of the concerns that West Hills Arbor Custom Homes has identified related to this particular request. In Mr. Robinson's narrative, he states that this waiver to remonstrate, it imposes an uncertain obligation that continues indefinitely since the waiver is not limited to a single LID. The waiver is also subject, it also subjects each lot to undefined LID assessments. So the item tonight has been recalibrated on your agenda under New Business, and there's not an opportunity for the developer to testify on the proposal as a result of it being under New Business. So staff will be handling the proposal in the regular meeting. And I understand, as of this afternoon, that you may hear from both Mr. Dan Grimberg of West Hills and Mike Robinson under the citizen input portion of your meeting at the front end of the regular meeting. So it would provide an opportunity for the council to ask some specific questions of the applicant, and if you do have questions about this, I'm obviously there to answer those, but it might be helpful to ask the applicant, the applicant-developer, some specific questions as well. So the code requirement originates in subsection 4.177 of the Development Code, which requires that a waiver of remonstrance against formation of an LID be recorded in the county recorder's office as well as on the city's lean docket as part of recordation of a final plat. This has been a requirement of all the subdivisions in Frog Pond West, but has not been consistently applied to subdivisions in other parts of the city over the long term. The applicant-developer of Frog Pond Ridge, which you have your second reading on tonight, as well as two other projects in Frog Pond West, and this group is West Hills Development, they brought forward concerns to staff about six months ago regarding this code requirement and requested that city staff work with them to see if we could come up with some potential solutions. There was a wide variety of ideas that were tossed around, and in the end, this release of the restrictive covenant was the approach that was determined to be most appropriate to bring cord for the council's consideration. Request that has been made is that the template of the development and anti-aging agreement be revised to provide for release of the restrictive covenant waiving right of remonstrance in light of the developer's obligation to pay the infrastructure supplemental fee in accordance with the executed development agreement. In essence, the logic is that once the infrastructure supplemental fee is paid, the lot, the individual lot, would have paid their proportionate share of the transportation costs that are needed to serve the project. And this is specifically the furniture improvements, and additional charges under a future LID would not be necessary. It was asked if the city would be giving up a financing tool that would be needed in the future. The technical answer, I believe, to that question would be yes. However, staff believes that the practical answer is no, in that an LID would not be an appropriate tool to address future widening beyond what is being done now. The lots in Frog Pond West would have satisfied their requirement under the transportation system plan, paying the supplemental infrastructure fee as well as paying their transportation systems development charges, meeting their proportioned requirements. For the city to come back at an undefined point in the future to attempt to leverage more resources from existing homeowners for future projects makes little sense and is quite frankly impractical. It is important to note that as of today, there are no plans for a local improvement district at this time to provide infrastructure for Frog Pond West, and there are mechanisms to fund the future transportation improvements that may be needed, and those would be systems development charges, or as the city has used in many cases over the last couple of decades, urban renewal. By way of background, the city has completed 12 LIDs to provide the essential pipes and roads that are necessary to open up portions of the city that were previously unserved. Property owners are typically motivated to form an LID to obtain some essential service and to assess themselves to receive the benefit of developing their property, which adds substantial value. This is simply not the case with the owners in Frog Pond. The revised development agreement language would condition release of the LID waiver for a specific parcel within Frog Pond Development upon payment of the supplemental infrastructure fee, and would require the developer to pay all costs and fees associated with the city's release of the waiver and removal of the encumbrance from title on the property at the county, at Plaquemines County. It should be noted that the proposed modification to the template, if it were to be approved, it would be offered to other existing and future developers in Frog Pond West. Where a lot may have already been sold, the owner of that lot would also be able to remove the requirement for the waiver if they so chose. It would apply essentially to all existing and future lots in Frog Pond West. So the staff recommendation on this is approval as proposed, and I'm more than happy to try to answer any questions that the council has at this time regarding the proposed amendment to the Frog Pond West Development Agreement template.
Well, thank you, Mr. Namsoo. Council, time for discussion or questions? Councilor Linville?
I think I understand what this is about, and was just wondering if, it looked like this, the waiver had not been in place or used for quite a number of years. Maybe 10, 12 years, I think, 12 or 13 years the last time? And so I guess I had two questions. One is, does this set a precedent that might need to then be applied to future developments, particularly in Frog Pond? And, or are we at the place where this is just an antiquated portion of our code that we just don't need any longer?
Those are great questions. I would say, working backwards through your question, it does feel to me like it's an antiquated standard. The last local improvement district that the city completed was LID 12. That was 1998. I don't know that we even had to exercise waivers of remonstrance at that time since the road that was being built was connecting Elixon Road and Beckman Road and was opening up the entire northeast portion of the city with a brand-new transportation facility as well as sewer and water. There was a time when the city was building out, obviously, that an LID was an important tool. Town Center Loop West was constructed with an LID. 95th Avenue was constructed with an LID. And then when we created the infrastructure supplemental fee, it felt like that fee was really taking the place of the need for any kind of LID going forward for Frog Pond West. So this has been an interesting exercise. I don't believe that the tool is intended to be placed on property in perpetuity. In other words, once the subdivision is recorded, this encumbrance should be able to be addressed in that the transportation system is being paid for lot-by-lot through the supplemental fee and the SDCs. And that the thought of this being out there for an extended period of time really doesn't make sense to me as a person who applies these code requirements. So there's some reflection, Councilor Linville, that's going on within the walls of City Hall. The waiver does have a place here, and I'll just describe one scenario that is possible. If the waiver would still stay in place as a requirement, and the waiver would still be required to be recorded against each lot, it would be the situation where, imagine if we had hundreds of platted and developed lots, but we had some situation occur where, just take the last recession, for example, housing came to a complete standstill. Let's imagine something that's just equally as bad as that, or something potentially even worse, where housing was not being constructed at all, and we may be looking at a very long period of time before any houses would be built. So the waiver would be in place on those vacant lots, those platted lots that could be in place.
Right.
For those of us that have been around a long time, we recall the first phase of Bilbois, the matrix side of things, where they had 200 lots platted in that very first phase, and then the recession hit. Those lots sat largely vacant for the better part of a decade. It would be under a drastic situation such as that where an LID may need to be discussed. We need to build Beckman Road. We have platted lots, but we're not receiving the infrastructure supplemental fee income that we need in order to build that lot. So I see the tool as a necessary bridge from the platted lot and the construction of the subdivision to the actual pulling of the building permit when the supplemental fee is paid. So it still has a role to play up until the time that that supplemental fee is paid, but I don't believe it's a tool that's intended to be in place over decades for anything that kind of comes forward in the future. It really is intended to address the needs that the project brings forward, and those needs have been addressed.
And am I correct in understanding that that shows an encumbrance on the deed at the current time?
Correct, every lot. So you buy your brand-new house and have this recorded, this recorded encumbrance, and the developer has articulated the concern that some of the property owners have raised. So they want to know specifics about what this encumbrance means. They would like to know what the LID is for. That question could not be answered. They would like to know how much the LID would cost, and that question cannot be answered because they don't have one planned. And how many LIDs might there be? We're unable to answer that as well. So this causes great uncertainty for buyers out there in the market, and that is one of the concerns that the developer has brought forward that has been getting this discussion and driving this actual proposal.
Thank you.
Council President Akervall?
This information's really helpful, so thank you. Thanks for your explanations. What I believe I'm hearing is that we really, even with these modifications that are being proposed, we keep the possibility of a LID in place until the fees are paid.
Correct.
So does that put more emphasis then on the importance of the SDCs and these other fees in the area?
Could you tell me more about that? Definitely you can buy that?
Yeah, I mean, does, because it feels like, okay, if we're taking this away as a tool, which hinging on them paying the fees, then the fees that they're paying, the SDCs, these other fees, more emphasis kind of goes on to those, the SDCs, and the importance that those play, I guess, the role that those play in our needs and fulfilling the needs of the systems we need to build. Is that kind of the, am I thinking about it the right way?
Yes, you absolutely are. This is the first time that we came up, that Wilsonville came up with a supplemental infrastructure fee. So this is new territory from that perspective. That has resulted in a slight delay in completing the improvements in that we need to collect the money first and then go build the improvements. So it definitely places high emphasis on those supplemental fees and the SDCs that are being collected. You're absolutely correct.
Okay. And then also, you know, when I was reading the information in the packet, some question, but as we've discussed it now and as you've explained it, I think you've clarified it some. And that's on how this will be handled with the lots that have already sold? Or, you know, I guess, already sold, people have moved into those homes, or, you know, at that point has kind of already, exchanges happened, some of the lots in Frog Pond, but obviously not all of the lots, right? And so how does that work to kind of keep some consistency or fairness, or, you know, what does that look like? And when I was reading in the packet, I saw the text that staff would propose as the developers of those already sold lots, where the fee had already been paid, so they've already paid their fees, that's already been covered. Then the property owner should be allowed to remove the waiver, provided that the property owner pays all the associated costs. But are those associated costs, are we referring to the fees that we already kind of determined that the developer paid?
No, what I'm referring to there is the costs associated with the release of the document on your title at the county. So there would be some...
I see.
Ancillary fees that would be required to release it from your title. So again, if this were approved, I would reach out to those existing homeowners. I would probably write a letter to them that said that this had been passed and that an opportunity for you as a new buyer to take the following steps to remove it from your title if you so chose. So we want to be sure that we communicate that out to all of the various property owners, and I would rely on my builder partners to assist me with that effort. I'm not able to commit the builders to that cost on behalf of those homes that have sold, but that sure would be a nice gesture on behalf of those homebuyers if the builders were willing to assist with that. But obviously, that's an extra step that's really beyond the intent of this particular action. I would just put that out there for the developers to consider. And then we would go through the same processes for an individual property owner as we would for the developer, say, on the lot-by-lot basis. So we would work with them individually to do that.
Okay, because I did kind of wonder, how might that be communicated to the people that have already purchased lots? And is there hazard or, you know, complications, I guess, from having some people that are under an old system and some people that might be under a new system that would have a negative effect too? You know, just trying to think about having this change happen midstream.
And the goal would be to have it be unilateral across the whole area, go back, get everybody who's bought, and then have it apply going forward as well.
Okay, thank you. Thanks for the information.
Councilor Linville?
Just a quick question, Mr. Namsoo. Are those, are those fees, they would be like filing a new deed, right? Would that be similar to what the cost might be? Or are they going to have to, are they talking about attorney fees?
There shouldn't be attorney fees. Maybe Ms. Jacobson can weigh in on this as our resident expert on all things recording at the county. The release should be a process that is equivalent of recording something against the title. We're talking about, my understanding would be it's a couple hundred dollars type of a situation. I don't know, Barbara, do you have any light that you may be able to shed on that?
Sure, it's, yeah, it's just a recording fee, and it's the same, they charge, the county charges a per-page recording fee. Every county's got a slightly different fee, and the fees have gone up considerably over the last few years. So it'd probably be, you know, a one-page document with the legal description attached, so two pages in theory. And in terms of the form of the release, I'm assuming that West Hills Attorney will come up with a template that can then be used and shared with the residents where properties have already sold, or can be used and shared. We can make that the template that is used by everyone. So the cost should be pretty nominal. Did that answer your question? Yeah?
So I wanted to build just a little bit on Councilor Akervall's question about the heightened priority or importance of the fee, the supplemental fee structure. If that is the city's vehicle going forward, we've got to be sure we get that right. We've got to be sure that we are accurately contemplating all the costs that will, and that raises a certain question about, we're collecting fees ahead of time, and sometime later, we're going to do a project. If you drive along Beckman Road now at Frog Pond, there's no half-street improvement yet. There's no sidewalk. There's no parking strip. There's no, I mean, all of those improvements are yet to come. What is it going to cost to build that next year, the year after? You know, we're projecting that number. I also had a concern that I raised to... Uh, I also uh, had a concern that I raised to, to you, Mr. Namsoo, about the uh, the Beckman Dip Bridge issue and the prospect of how we're going to uh, fund that and what appropriate share, uh, individual houses in, in Frog Pond, you know, should bear for that. So, how, how do we be sure that our supplemental fee is in fact adequate, not excessive, and appropriate?
Excellent question, Mayor Nam. So, the package that was approved uh, back in 2017 that created the supplemental infrastructure fee had a number of things in it that allowed for an escalation of the fee. So, uh, biannually, the city looks at escalating the fee based on a number of very specific criteria, including the Seattle Construction Index, which is a, a cost of construction index. Uh, this year, the last time we passed that day, July 1, uh, we look at it twice a year. If there is an increase in the Seattle Construction Index, we escalate the fee by that uh, percentage, which is typically in the 1% to 3% uh, type of a range. In July of 2020, there was a 0% construction cost index increase, so the fee did not increase at that time. There are a number of other additional points in time that uh, the package that was adopted allows for the fee to be increased. And those would include, as we proceed design and we get further down the road, when we get to 30%, 60%, and 90%, we often have detailed construction cost estimates that come with those points in design. And we would be allowed to increase the fee based on accurate information that comes into the city along with those advancements in the design of the project itself. So, we're looking at that. At this point, um, the frontage improvement is, is being looked at as one holistic project all the way to Canyon Creek Road and Beckman Road, where there's going to be a signalized intersection to the west. The Dip Bridge is all part of this, as is the frontage. We, we seek to design the entire project as one entire project and uh, have one consulting firm design the whole thing together for um, for obvious purposes. The uh, Beckman Dip Bridge, we have a preliminary cost estimate. We have not uh, put the in, the in, the increase uh, into the fee at this time. And I ended up um, sharing with Mayor Nam, based on his question earlier today, that there are opportunities to increase it. When we adopted the methodology, we created um, a placeholder in there to add the Beckman Dip uh, Bridge, be if there was a shortfall in funding. And right now, we're still studying the bridge. We don't have all of the information that we need to be able to make the decision. We still need to bring forward all of the options to council and have council ultimately decide what the ultimate configuration is going to be. We're working hard with consultants on that. A lot of work is being done behind the scene. Uh, if it came, if it came out that we uh, chose a design and a, and a solution that ended up uh, being over the amount of money that's been allocated through urban renewal. And if, if you recall, we've got $13 million in urban renewal to build this project. Uh, the, the methodology identified uh, $161 per $1 million of shortfall in funding that could be added to the supplemental fee to pay for the Beckman Dip Bridge. So, we are tracking this closely. We're having one more study done by Dowell that will be available to staff in the middle of October. Uh, we're gonna wrap all that up with all the other options, and we'll be coming back to council to have more discussions about the Beckman Dip Bridge project. And if this final design that's chosen results in cost estimates that are over, we end up escalating the fee uh, by $161 per $1 million of shortfall, or um, for any amount that's over 13 million, we end up uh, with the ability to escalate that fee. So, we're, we're um, in a good position to do it. We're doing the studies and the background analysis that is necessary in order to understand it, and we will be working closely with the council to come up with decisions that will allow us to move forward and create those, um, create those assessments commensurate with the current times, the current pricing, and uh, keeping our, our fee current.
Yeah. And uh, those increases, if they were to occur, will not be retroactive. They will be from that point in time forward on new sales of homes, correct?
Correct.
And, and so, the time factor comes into play as well as the construction cost factor uh, as we do these projections and determine the timetable on which projects might occur. So, it's kind of a dance. It, I mean, it's, it's, it's all these pieces that have to fit together. And as Counselor President Acravall noted, you know, I think that there's an increased or heightened uh, urgency to be careful with our fee calculations and, and being sure that we are uh, being accurate and uh, being timely with that. Uh, your, staff seems to be confident that they're, they're able to handle that part of the uh, of the process, is what I'm hearing.
Yes, sir.
Yeah. Other questions or discussion for uh, staff? Not seeing uh, anything else at this point in time. So, uh, Mr. Namsoo, thank you very much for the additional explanation, and we'll look forward to see if there's uh, the, the built community representatives at the meeting.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it, Mayor, Council.
Thank you. Mr. Cosgrove, that's all the items that I have on my original uh, agenda, but I don't have the updated agenda in front of me. Is there anything additional?
That's all for work session.
Uh, the agenda, we had originally had Sheriff Roberts that uh, was going to come talk to us, but has not been available. Is that accurate?
We, we received an email this morning that said Mr. Roberts had a family emergency to attend to. So, he regrets that he cannot join us tonight.
So, will we be rescheduling that, or what's, what's the plan?
Well, I would certainly try to, yes.
Okay. All right. Anything else from council for a work session? Not seeing anybody waving their hand. Uh, I think that that about does us. Should we regroup then in about, what, 10 minutes?
Yep. Perfect.
That work? All right. I'll see everybody in about 10 then, at 7 o'clock.
So, isn't Roberts out this term?